Welcome, everybody. I would call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees of the Town of Buena Vista. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Lacy?
Yes.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Switzer?
Yes.
And Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Would you join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item I have tonight is a proclamation. Whereas Malcolm Sillers will step down from his role as Airport Advisor Board Member on December 31st, 2020, whereas Malcolm served as an Advisory Board Member to support his community by becoming an active volunteer supporting the Central Colorado Regional Airport, whereas Malcolm first served as an Advisory Board Member of the Central Colorado Regional Airport in 1999 and has spent most of the following years as an Advisory Board Member, many as Chair, whereas Malcolm was an active member of the Advisory Board, including his role in helping the airport's planning committee to create high-altitude testing facility. Whereas Malcolm, a career meteorologist, created an extensive weather package for Central Colorado Regional Airport, testing clients, and whereas Malcolm, as a member of the airport board, applied his real estate expertise in reviewing land use matters and assisted the airport in acquiring adjacent real estate holdings. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Duff Lacy, and the Board of Trustees hereby proclaim that the Town of Buena Vista gives special recognition and tribute to Malcolm Sillers for his many years of outstanding service on behalf of the Central Colorado Regional Airport, given under my hand and seal of the Town of Buena Vista on this 27th day of October, 2020. And I will say he will be missed. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have any questions, comments on the agenda as presented? If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
I move we accept the agenda.
Thank you, Libby.
Second, Volpe.
Second, Volpe. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Next is consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I think the only comment I would have is I was, I'm eager to hear more about, from the Rec Advisory Board, there's mention of a toddler program. So I'm eager to hear more about that. I hope that's something that can happen because there is only 10 spots for toddlers at the BV School District, and most of those are for staff. And I know there's a waitlist, so I'd love to hear more about that. I hope that's something that happens.
Okay, that could be something that maybe Earl can keep us posted on. Any other questions or comments? I would like to recognize the appointment of Mark Godonis. As a regular member of the Airport Advisory Board, we appreciate your service, Mark. Are there any other comments? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Cindy.
Second.
Second, Nyberg. Further discussion? Paula, I'm going to ask for roll call on that one.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Switzer?
Yes.
And Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Thank you all.
I may. Is Devin, could we do a sound check with you? I just don't want you to, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Can you?
Okay. You hear me now?
Yeah, okay. All right, carry on.
Thank you. Next item is public comment, and I will remind everyone, if you're on the phone, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to mute or unmute yourself. You also, if you're on by internet, you can put something in the chat, and we will recognize that you're wishing to speak. So at this point in time, if anybody would like to make public comment, please raise your hand or make note in the chat, and we will get you on.
See, Trustee Switzer put her hand up.
Oh, no, I'm trying to change the screen, sorry.
She's just testing us.
It works. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, I don't see anything else going on, so I will close public comment. Next on the agenda is staff reports. Town Administrator.
All right, good evening, everyone. Get to my report, page 17 of your packet, and hopefully the screen is sharing for you all. So hit on a couple of key dates coming up. Tonight, we have guest budgets speaker, Wendell Pryor, and I think a couple of the board members from the EDC are here. So we'll hear from them tonight, a good update and looking into 2021. And then at the next meeting, we have Joseph Typle, who will come and speak on behalf of the Chape County Community Foundation, and will focus in on our community grant process, the budget for that, and the timing for when they will roll out that next grant cycle for 2021. Just a couple of other updates. You'll see there, if you have any questions about those, feel free to ask. Jumping into my report, I have a recycling update. Unfortunately, it's not solving all of the world's recycling problems and needs, but bringing kind of, bringing us closer to conclusion, at least for this budget cycle. So as you know, we've been working with our other partners in the county, Salida Poncha in the county, to try to evaluate alternatives and long-term planning for recycling pickup in our area, specifically the drop sites that are at each location. And Angel of Chavino has been a great partner in that over the years, but their prices continue to increase with no real, I guess, plan in place for what happens from year to year. So as I mentioned previously, we're looking at a, we were looking at close to about a 50% price increase year over year. So the municipalities were kind of ready to pull the plug on that. We have some private providers that are expanding their services for curbside pickup, albeit for a cost to the consumer, but they're ramping up their services. And, you know, again, we have to kind of weigh how much of a subsidy does the town play in recycling versus the private sector filling that need. The county, and I think in a wise proposal, didn't want to necessarily cut that off starting January 1st. So out of their funding, they are, they've agreed to pay the cost increase or pay for the cost increase, keeping the town's budget flat year to year for the curb, for the drop site recycling. So I think we have a solution that I think is viable to get us into 2021. We're also looking at bringing in a consultant that will do the study we're hoping to do this year, to evaluate what other options are there and what ways can we start looking at recycling a little bit different that's more in line with where the market's heading for it and yet not have it all end up in the landfill. So that's the plan as we enter into 2021, and that is what our current draft budget reflects, a flat cost year to year. And just a reminder, we spent a little over $15,000 on that, for that drop site pickup. Also worth noting, I don't know how many of you paid attention to the Nestle special use or the Nestle ferment discussions, some marathon meetings in the last week, but there was some discussion and mention from the county or some representatives in the county about potentially getting some dedicated money to help offset the cost of these recycling offerings. So we'll see where the county commissioners and the county go with that, but I just, I wanted to mention that as a, as something that has come up. Chape Housing Authority, we had an outstanding signing ceremony. Thank you to Mayor Pro Tim Fay for representing BV so well at that. And it was cold, but it was a great event, and I think it was, provided a lot of energy moving ahead with the creation of the authority. So one thing I would like to talk about, we could save it for trustee staff interaction, but we're going to start advertising for the two board seats that you all will appoint. And so just generally, I want to give direction on how you want to fill those seats. We've talked about having one of our trustees fill one of those spots and then filling the other spot with someone from within the community. I think that's, that's a great idea, but that doesn't necessarily, there's nothing locked in on how we form that. So I'd like to get some direction on we, how we fill those seats, whether that's a trustee and a volunteer or two volunteers. And then if the board would like to receive applications for both, even if one of them is a trustee. So think about that a little bit, and we can come back to it before the end of the meeting. Short-term rentals, this was a topic that we, we did a kind of a staff presentation update on where we stand with short-term rentals in terms of our licensing requirements and numbers of license that we have active, all the data around where they are in terms of zoning and types of units that are being used for short-term rentals. So we had a deeper dive of that earlier in the year. It was mentioned at one of our recent meetings to bring this back as an agenda item before the end of the year. And I, what I put in my report is the Planning and Zoning Commission actually identified that they wanted to dig into this topic a little bit, starting with their November meeting. And I imagine that that conversation is a very involved conversation, but I imagine it's going to continue through a few of their meetings, especially when it comes to really digging in and identifying if there is a problem, what is that problem? And kind of evaluating options. So they're starting into that conversation. Looking at the agendas for the rest of the year, things are packed. We've got full agendas, you see tonight. That doesn't stop until we get into January. So I'm posing to the board that maybe we hold off on having that as an agenda item for the board until we can have the P and Z bring forward some of the things they've been looking at, possibly some recommendations from that group. And we could even have a joint work session with P and Z on the topic once we get into 2021. So also would like to get formal direction from the board on that topic as well. And then lastly, and I'll be quiet, staffing update, we do have our deputy clerk finance/finance clerk position still open. Please spread the word. We're getting, we're getting good applications, but we haven't received anything from anybody around BV, so we'd like to see some more. So help spread the word on that, if you don't mind. That concludes my report. Any questions or comments for now?
Amy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. For the recycling, thank you for taking the initiative with that because I think the landfill's filling up faster than anticipated. And I would like to pursue at some point, and maybe have to be interwoven with the budget, but when, where town offers trash, it would be great if we could also offer recycling. I understand that comes at an added cost, but if we could explore that, that would be great. Maybe just get some ideas how much of a burden it will be on town, but really think from sustainability standpoint, we should move in that direction. For the housing authority, I know this came, I saw this in your notes from the last meeting, too, Phillip, so I'm afraid it's going to get missed if we put it till the end of the meeting. I think from what I understand, the other communities were thinking one trustee and one community member. Is that the sense you get?
I think that's how they'll start off. Salida's going to do that, I think, and the county has already stated that they're going to do that.
And, you know, I think Libby obviously is amazing. If Libby, if you want to do it, or there was talk of maybe me doing it, I'd be happy to take a seat, but I think Libby would be excellent. So trustees, if you want to put your, whatever you guys think, that, that sounds great. Libby, do you have any thoughts on that?
I am not wanting to take that on at this point. So I think we would keep that, keep that open, and I think you would add a lot of good energy to it.
Trustees, I'd be honored to take that seat, whatever you guys decide. And then for short-term rentals, I think just to follow up, I know I'm the one that initiated that. It's obviously something I think I'm concerned with and, but I do, I appreciate the work session that was, that was put up in May. I just think what I was looking for is for trustees to come together and say, hey, how do we, how do we tackle this big problem? Or is there a problem? I can't say I really want to give staff any direction. I'm just hoping to have a discussion with other trustees. Maybe if it goes to planning and zoning, maybe we could do a joint work session, but I'm not really necessarily asking anything from staff. I think trustees, maybe we could come together, is more what I was looking for. And thanks, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Trustees, comments? I will, you know, and I'll make a comment, and I agree in the respect. We've got a full docket. I would like to see, and I think this will give us the opportunity to see this, the discussion that comes out of P and Z from their minutes, to kind of see what kind of discussions they're having, concerns if they have them or not, and then the ability to sit down with them and we can, at that point in, point in time, put in our input if we have a concern or not. This year, and I think we discussed this a little bit before, this is not a good year in the respect of what we're really seeing in numbers. I think if we'd had a normal year, we may have seen an increase in short-term rentals, maybe not. We just don't know. And so I think right now, we're kind of on a hold pattern, but I'd like to see what P and Z has to say. And that'd give us the opportunity to review some of their minutes and their discussions and then have a sit-down with them after the first of the year. That's my thought. Any other trustees like to voice on that?
Would it be possible to request their agendas be forwarded to the trustees? I'd be interested in sitting in on some of the discussion rather than wait for the minutes to show up. Sometimes it's a couple of months. So if possible, I'd just like to see what's on their agenda and see if I can sit in.
And I don't see any problem with that. Is that something, Mark, that we can have forwarded to us? Well, actually, yeah, just to see what they're going to discuss for that meeting.
Do you think they'll look at fees? Or is that a, no, okay.
No.
So I think that's something that we could, where is that posted about what they're going to be speaking about?
Yeah, it's posted, it's posted on our Agenda Center on the website, so we can forward that to the trustees. I would say the only thing to be aware of is if there is a, and I don't think there's anything on the docket, but we might as well mention it now, if P and Z is hearing any quasi-judicial topics that may end up to the board, you should stay away. Right, Jeff? Yes, okay.
That's, that's correct. It's, you want to basically be hearing it in front of you, not the P and Z.
Right. So I think we're safe on that, and we'll filter that before we share those agendas with you. So in case there is something that's coming up, you can be aware of it. But something like this, you absolutely can sit in on it.
And if I may, the, if the Planning and Zoning Commission is talking about their general objectives and what they're trying to achieve, that is certainly one thing. But if they start talking about proposed changes to the UDC, then we need to notify the public in advance of those discussions. So the UDC requires us to post those at least 15 days in advance. So we are probably starting those conversations now at this point in December, if we're going to be having that. So I think we can certainly talk about what it is that we're trying to achieve in general, but if we start talking about land use regulations, then we need to make sure that we have public notice posted so that members of the public can join in those conversations. So Jeff can talk about the kind of legal requirements. We certainly can talk about in general, but when we start getting into actual regulations, because we don't, I don't know if there's an issue to be solved yet.
Correct.
And I agree. I think that's the point, and I guess, Mark, I would put it out there, if, if P and Z has a question for the board, what are we trying to accomplish or why are we going there? Then, then obviously bring that to us. So that the board can make that comment or decision as a board. Maybe we're headed in a direction we don't need to go, and we're just going to waste time. I mean, I don't know that for a fact, but that's something we need to know.
Staff agrees, and we'd like to, to make sure if they do start surfacing some themes of, that may lead to future changes to our land use or, you know, whatever they come up with. I think that that's what the discussion is between P and Z and the board. They can bring that forward, explain what they're seeing, and why they're bringing forward those recommendations.
Great. No, I think that'll be perfect. And as for the CHA representation, we'll cover that in trustee staff. That'll get everybody the opportunity to kind of think about it throughout the meeting. And we'll just bring that back up, Phillip, in trustee staff, and see if there's any further comments, okay?
Duff, I think Libby has a comment.
Oh, there's Libby.
Yeah. If we were to decide to make changes in the short-term rental fee schedule, at what point would we do that?
Well, the staff typically brings fee changes to you when we're doing the budget so that they can be established January 1st, but you, you as a board can certainly change fees at any time.
So let me add into that. Thank you, Mark. We're bringing a draft of the fee schedule at the next meeting. You'll see that on the draft agenda, so the short-term rental fee is one of those. Staff is proposing a change to it, and at that point, we'll have a further discussion on that. And I will say that we are into the renewal cycle. We try to catch business license and other licensing ahead of time. So grant is holding on those renewals until we get a better indication from the board where we're going to end up on that fee.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And at that time, we'll just let our attorney interject as to the, I'll call it legalities, Jeff, of how we set fees and what we can and cannot do. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the general rule is that fees need to be set to recover the town's costs for administering, basically to cover the impacts of the licensed or activity subject to the fees. So fees are generally not a profit-making means to gain revenue. They're basically to cover the town's costs in administering whatever the fees relate to.
And that's what, and obviously, that's where we are with grant, and I believe, Phillip, you did mention that he's reviewing that himself. And kind of, we have to rely on him to do that. Amy, you have something?
Sure. I'd say, Jeff, I'd be interested, or at the fee schedule, what, there is an impact that short-term rental has on our community. Can you, and that's not as easy as measuring eight hours of license or inspection, but there is an impact. Is that, can we assign a value to that for a short-term rental that could go into, say, an affordable housing fund?
Okay, so I guess it's probably a more complicated question than it might seem.
Okay. Maybe we can, or yeah, feel free not to put you on the spot, Jeff.
No, 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 that's fine. I think that how you establish impact fees versus fees that are just for administration can be a little different. So if you're looking for like an affordable housing fee that comes from short-term housing, we could look at how you could do that. You need to study the backup, the outside impacts. You have to basically justify it, but very likely you could do that. But you couldn't, you have to probably base it upon a more formal study than you would for sort of other town fees that you're kind of roughly approximating.
Trustees, if I could maybe run something by you guys with short-term rentals. You know, one way is just if we change the market, if short-term rentals become more expensive, that may not create some long-term rentals. And I think we would need to instruct staff to figure out if we could do a sales tax question in 2021, possibly what an impact fee would be. But that is one way to possibly create some affordable housing. So I guess if there was one motion to be made, could we instruct staff to, in the next 6, 90 days, doesn't have to be before the next meeting, to look at ways to charge short-term rentals appropriate fees?
I can, I can say that staff can do that, but as was discussed, staff is already under it. We're looking at after the first of the year before we're going to look at anything in that respect for short-term rentals. We can always make adjustments. We can always do things. I would suggest, at this point, giving staff the time to finish up the end of year and to get us on our way, let them, let them finalize our budget and things like that at this point, and we can talk to, that's another subject to come up with P and Z. What are we trying to accomplish and why? And I think that's what really the question is, and that's the direction it needs to go. What is it we're trying to accomplish and why are we going one way or another? As come for taxation, Jeff, you'll have to get involved in that, whether we can levy a tax, and I think it would come into, that's that occupational tax that we talked about. I think it would have to come in addressed that way. I'm not sure, but you can research that, Jeff, and let us know after the first of the year type of thing. That's what I see at this point in time. Are there any other questions for Phillip on his report?
I have a comment to make on the short-term rental. If there, if Planning and Zoning is going to look at that in December, and it's a monthly topic for them, I would like the board to have a work session with them no later than the end of February. That gives them three meetings together to have, to discuss and decide what they want to do. But I know that Amy and I are interested in the short-term rentals being controlled more.
Okay, and I respect that. Part of that is going to come in, no different with their meetings than ours. It's going to depend how their agendas are stacked up with approvals and building variances, that kind of stuff, too. So it's going to depend on their timing also, Cindy. I agree that I would like to see it after the first of the year. How soon is really going to depend how it can go through. Okay?
So we're going to, just, sorry, Phillip, yep.
I was just going to say, we could ask Mark to have that discussion with them, and then they could set, they could set a goal that they feel fits with their schedule.
We can certainly take a look at that and get more information and then certainly start down that road to be prepared for any discussions with the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next item, Town Treasurer, Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, my reports on page nineteen of the packet. Since I have three more reports in the meeting tonight, I kept it short and sweet, we do have a new transparency website that is the URL that is in blue here on my memo. And then we did receive August sales tax, which is seven, almost eight percent higher than August of nineteen and year to date is running at fifteen, almost sixteen percent higher than the same time period of nineteen, the budget surplus is just under two hundred thousand. Our local versus remote percentages, local is eighty-seven percent versus the remote of thirteen percent. And then I have attached those graphs. Then the only thing left here on this report is the expenditures over two thousand dollars. And I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Anybody have any questions for Michelle? Go ahead, Amy.
So just, and I I emailed Michelle about this, looking at page twenty-one and page twenty-two, twenty-two is BV town only. And then the um page twenty-one is the county, our county portion of sales tax, right?
No, it is.
It's everything, it's both.
Both town and county, yes.
So just so, which was surprising to me, I thought town was businesses, um BV town's business is the same as as flat as last year. The growth is coming from the county portion of the sales tax, which was surprising to me. I thought it was town sales tax that was up, so I just wanted trustees had any feedbacks or maybe they noticed that, but that was, that was surprising to me.
Uh, I'm sorry, that that's not correct. Trustee X, so Michelle, can you speak to that a little bit?
So town and county are both up. Um, county collects, what is it, uh, two point nine percent of everything in the county, including uh two point nine percent of everything in BV. Town collects two point five percent of everything in BV. County apportions what we get from them based on motor vehicle registrations. And that's how we get, that's how they calculate what we get from them. They don't have to share theirs with us, and in fact, about six years ago, they had told by the federal government that they were not going to get their payment in lieu of taxes, and so they were talking about taking away the apportionments to Salida and BV, and I believe Pontius Springs gets some too. And just uh having the towns collect uh get their own sales tax and not any portion of the county, and there was a big uproar about that, so they don't have to give us anything, but they do, and it's been this agreement for oh, a hundred years probably. What else did you want clarified, Philip?
Can I, can I add just real quick, so it's
Absolutely.
Thank you, yep.
So, so this chart that we're looking on the screen, this is the combination of town and and county sales taxes. Um, as you pointed out, uh, this one that's that compares the local versus remote is only looking at the town portion. The, the uh local business uh numbers are are a small percentage higher than twenty nineteen for August. And the remote um is is up as well. If you look at, uh, but if you go back up to the these total numbers up here, for August, it is true that the county was a higher percentage over twenty nineteen than the town. Uh, county was seven point eight four percent over August uh twenty nineteen, and the town was one point seven two. But year to date, the town number is up nineteen point three one, and the county number is up nine point six nine. So, uh, August is actually an exception. Uh, most of the months through the year, the town number has been higher as a percentage over twenty nineteen. And you can't see that breakdown here, I'm lea, I'm reading off another, off off the actual spreadsheet.
I was just gonna pull that spreadsheet up, but Philip's got it up, so.
I have got it on the other computer, so that's, you you can't assume that the county number is larger based on this, it was in August. But year to date.
Can I answer your question, Amy? Or does that clarify?
Yes.
Hey, thank you, anything else, Michelle, at this point?
Yeah, I had a question.
Go ahead, Devin.
Yeah, about, um, we got the email today about the uh the local business grant and how it was over we overspent by accident, and I was wondering what was going to happen with that, we got like ten thousand dollars less and left, and then uh if people need more, if we're gonna add anymore to that or or what.
Can we save that for the agenda item?
Oh, yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah, we'll, we'll cover that.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to Planning Department. Let's go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, um, on page twenty-three is my monthly report. I'll just note that we are exceptionally busy. Um, I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of people regarding both developed and vacant land in town, and particularly a couple of significant chunks of vacant land, so there's always work to be done. I will note, um, while there might not have been site plans submitted in February, we also didn't have any in September, my apologies for the typo. But we are still up in terms of residential construction. We are working currently on the farm phase two, um, the eastern portion of that site. And we are also working on Legacy Bank and working on getting South Court Social done and the alley that is needed for on that block, which is block twenty-one. So staff is hoping to bring a conversation to the board about getting that alley constructed and paid for, and that will probably occur in November. With that, I'll just say that Thursday night, our, I'm kind of excited, our Planning and Zoning Commission is going to be meeting with the county's Planning Commission to talk about growth in our planning area, our three-mile area around town, and our new intergovernmental agreement, so Friday, or excuse me, Thursday at five, we're going to be starting that conversation with the the county's Planning Commission. So with that, I'll open up to any questions that anyone has.
Uh, Mark, is that the first meeting they've had together?
Yes, this will be the inaugural meeting.
Very good, that's a a step, definitely a big step in the right direction.
Have you heard from Bread and Salt or the old Evergreen at all, is that, has there been any updates?
No, but I keep seeing cars going in and out of there, and I I I've not heard anything, but there seems to be a little bit of activity around there, but I haven't seen anything that would be like a building permit or a sign permit or anything from them.
Any other questions for Mark? Looked like it was going to flatten out, Mark, but you're at seventy-five.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's a big number, and we've got, uh, we're working currently on a site plan for a small multifamily down there on Pine and Cedar that is going to take advantage of that water line that South Main is going to be installing, so growth is coming, and we might even have a conversation about getting Evan Street built, so potentially having a conversation on Evan Street, that portion south of Cedar and north of Collegiate Commons.
Keep steering the wagon, man.
Do the best we can, put it out there, duct tape.
There you go, thanks, Mark. Any other questions for Mark, anybody? Thank you all. Business items now on the agenda, first is a public hearing. Should the Board of Trustees approve an application for issuing a hotel and restaurant liquor license to the Cellar on Railroad? We will give consideration to a liquor license to a new business. We will open the public hearing, um, I believe staff comment first.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and trustees, and I also want to let you know Candace is joining us also from the Cellar, and I'll give you a brief overview. On September eleventh of twenty twenty, the Cellar, Cellar Railroad sent it, submitted an application with Candace Bryant as manager and Antley Fowler of owner of the up-and-coming Cellar on Railroad for a hotel and restaurant liquor license with concurrent review by the Colorado Department of Revenue of Liquor. The application is complete and the appropriate fees have been paid. That break checks were submitted, and both Candace and Antley passed the um CBI and FBI checks. The building plans and specifications are a true representation of the facility, and the premises comply with the applicable zoning, building, health and fire regulations. The Fire Department, Police Department, Planning Department and Code Enforcement have signed up on the requirements. And then, um, Chaffey County Public Health has done a preliminary sign-up on the site. Wayne O'Ver bonus said that he has completed the preliminary walkthrough, and he will complete a pre-opening prior to the liquor license being issued by the town. Proof of possession of the premises has been provided. And then for determining the needs and desires of the neighborhood, a petition was circulated and submitted with the required number of signatures, and the entire town limits of Buena Vista is considered the neighborhood. Staff finds that the application is complete, meets the Colorado Liquor Code requirement, and recommends the Board of Trustees conditionally approve the hotel and restaurant license application, subject to the results of the pre-opening inspection from Chaffey County Public Health and the issuance of the state liquor license.
Thank you, Paula. Uh, trustees, do you have any clarifying questions to ask of staff? Okay, I hear none, um, I will open this now to um the applicant. If she would like to make a statement, Candace, if you would like to say anything, you're sure welcome to at this time.
Um, I guess I just want to say thanks for giving me your time, I know you have a lot on your agenda. Um, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer anything that you need me to.
Thank you, Candace, do you have any questions at this point for Candace? Trustees. Seeing none, I open this up for public comment. Again, um, star nine, if you're on the phone, if you would like to make a comment. Star six, I believe it is, to mute or unmute. Or you can click in on the chat button if you would like to make a comment. Hearing and seeing none. I close this portion of public comment. Trustees, discussion amongst yourselves, any questions, comments for each other? Go ahead, Libby.
Candace, I would like to um have you describe what the concept is for the Cellar and uh whether it will have food and various kinds of beverages.
Okay, I will open this portion, excuse me, Candace, I'll open the uh back up for public comment. Candace, go ahead.
So Libby, we're doing tapas, so pretty much small plates, tartine soup, uh, pretty heavy, like full meal charcuterie boards, and then also some smaller tapas-style plates. We'll have wine and beer, and although we've done the full liquor license, it was more opening with that in case we ever want to have like a hard seltzer, you know, like the sparkling waters that people drink. But not necessarily really our intention to do much with the liquor portion of things.
Thank you, Candace, is there any other questions for Candace at this point? Okay, I will close that portion of public hearing. Trustees, comments, do you have any comments, questions, a motion? To approve, conditionally approve, deny, do I have any comments?
Hey, I'm stoked to have another Main Street business, um, thank you, welcome, we're so stoked to have you guys, I'm sure it's been a ton of work so far, but you know, our community really um values Main Street business and we're stoked, so, welcome.
Thanks, Amy.
Trustees, I would entertain a motion.
Could initially approve it?
Thank you, Norm.
Second.
Second swisher, further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee X, dang?
Yes.
Trustee Faye?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Bro?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Bolton?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, and thank you Candace for attending tonight, and good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I closed the public hearing, next item on the agenda is Chaffey County Economic Development Coalition, Corporation, excuse me. Uh, Wendell Pryor is going to talk to us, how you doing tonight, Wendell?
Uh, fine, Mayor, thank you for having me, and I know you've got a busy schedule, so I'll uh try and be brief, I have a couple of board members also on the line, uh, Dave Blazer, our chair, and uh Carlin Walsh. I sent uh Philip uh late in the day an agenda that I want to uh cover very quickly and leave a few minutes for questions, uh, I also wanted to point out to you what's not on the agenda. Uh, so hopefully this will invite some further discussion when your agenda lightens up uh after the first of the year. What's not on the agenda, just by way of background for board members who are new to the board, is that a little bit of history of the Economic Development Corporation, whose mission is to make sure that Chaffey County to, is to assure that Chaffey County is open for business and promote the retention, creation and expansion of jobs, so we're kind of in the jobs business, but it's much broader than that. But by way of background and history for newer board members, uh, one of our first tasks was to try and get redundant broadband or internet connectivity in the county. Uh, we helped uh attract and then uh formulate the Colorado Central Telecom, which is located on the Highway twenty-four. Uh, and really a true grassroots success story, a couple of years ago, uh, they were the carrier of the year at the uh annual Mountain Connect Conference, they started from uh uh, less than probably a hundred connects in Crestone, Colorado, and now have over twenty-three hundred customers in uh the San Luis Valley, Cotopaxi, uh, Chaffey County and Lake County, so uh, that was one of our bigger projects, and more recently, uh, the Collegiate Commons project, uh, that led to affordable housing is something that we also leaned into. In addition, uh, we are the primary point of contact with the State Office of Economic Development and International Trade, referred to as OEDIT. Uh, I am a Governor Polis appointee to that uh uh commission which oversees the agency uh of the Governor's Office, and we're the ones that uh award the tax incentives and credits and uh to businesses that we're trying to attract to the state, and we've been wildly successful in that, I believe there was an article recently that rated the uh Colorado economy as the number one in the nation with regard to some of the the growth that we've been able to achieve, but we are that official point of contact with the state government. In addition, uh, Commissioner Rusty Granzel and myself serve on the Southern Colorado Economic Development District, that is the official uh uh federal planning district for this region. And they uh focus on uh large infrastructure projects that come through the Economic Development Administration in the Department of Commerce, and also help coordinate a number of the federal agencies that are involved uh with local governments and communities. The uh recently, the federal government awarded four hundred thousand dollars to them for a two-year grant to hire three economic recovery specialists, and ironically, Michael Yerman, who I think started his career in And ironically, Michael Yerman, who I think started his career in And Chaffey County as your town planner years ago is the representative that's been assigned To this area. But the significance of SCAD, as it's referred to, is that if you participate in the upcoming Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy and include infrastructure projects that the town wants to Get funded, you get bonus points or additional incentives. The city of Salida and building its wastewater treatment plant got an additional 1.5 million. Because when I started, it was able that we were able to include that project in there. And then finally, and more recently, you probably heard of the Central Mountain Small Business Development Agency. This is the first Small Business Development Center in Colorado since 1983. Jamie Bilzbach, who is a Buena Vista resident, heads up that program That covers three counties, but that leverages over $100,000 annually Into the county and park and lake counties for supportive small businesses. So I would strongly encourage after the first of the year to have Jamie come talk to you about Her program. And most recently, they've been responsible for coordinating some of the CARES Act funding with local businesses and provide ongoing free counseling with her Cadre of counselors to small businesses. And then finally, again, a subject, a couple of subjects for another day. Our workforce development. We still have a worker shortage in this county that we Continue to struggle with. We've been successful with Colorado Mountain College and launching a trades program in Salida, and we're continuing to work with them on projects like Truck drivers, including Nestle, that CMC is trying to work with to establish a driver training program. And lastly, senior housing is another Critical need for this county. We're the only county in the state, I'm told by the state demographer, that can actually measure the impact of Active retirees. So seniors drive about 27% Of the local economy in throughout Chaffey County. And we are woefully lacking facilities that allow seniors to age in place. So That's a major project we have too. But returning to the agenda very quickly. The major projects and priorities that we are currently working in, in addition to what I just described. As economic recovery, we started with the county government in their Weekly roundtable meetings. I think Commissioner Fell indicated that As of a couple of weeks ago, there had been 91 meetings since COVID started In the middle of latter part of March. So myself, along with a few board members, Carlin Walsh and Dave Blazer, our chair, and Jeff Post have been routinely meeting with That roundtable group to represent and advocate for businesses throughout the county. Along with the Small Business Development Center. Recently, we've been successful in positioning What's now known as the Coalition, the Salida and Buena Vista Chambers, along with the Salida Business Alliance to really be kind of that boots on the ground To represent and advocate for businesses, and they will be launching another round of COVID-related small business funding starting tomorrow, working with the Community Foundation. We coordinate economic development activities. Mark and I haven't had a conversation in a few weeks, but We routinely kind of check in with one another to see what's going on as well as Philip. And I just want to highlight We've been working with fading West and their application to seek both state and federal funding. Should the project get approved, I think they're waiting for USDA grant or USDA loan guarantee. We will be able to leverage an excess of a million dollars into that project of from state tax credits and funding. So we've been working very quick closely with them. Warehouse, manufacturing warehouse is a project that is pending. I have a beer writing on whether or not it's an Amazon fulfillment center, but I was contacted a couple of months ago By a representative from the largest, one of the largest commercial real estate companies in the country Regarding warehouse space In a specific zip code that included Buena Vista. So we're going to continue to pursue that project. And then lastly, we have been flooded with Remote workers both coming into the county and also those that are seeking to support them through Co-living or co-working spaces. So that's another active project that we're working on. But we are now An attractive area for couples that want to co-co-work In the county. I recently was able to turn a couple on to an NBC affiliate that was doing a Story on remote workers that had moved here. You've got a A couple of engineers that are that work with drones that recently relocated here from Colorado Springs that are working with the school district on a drone Program with Adam Fuller. So that's kind of exciting and an example of the people who are coming to town. And then lastly, we promote activity in your opportunity zones. You have two census tracts that are designated Officially as opportunity zones. We probably had no fewer than a half dozen bites or nibbles With regard to projects, but we work with the town and specifically Philip and Mark on Trying to attract businesses. And even though the Initial incentive has passed, there's still interest and the state is still actively promoting opportunity zones. You know, I'll close with this and then open it up to questions. I think for EDC, you know, I say EDC 2.0, I have Run the organization for 11 and a half years. I was the first and only director. And hopefully, within the next 48 hours, my fourth grandchild, a grandson will be born. And I'm just going to spend more time with my grandkids starting next year. So sometime into 2021, I'm going to be Retiring and stepping back. I'm not going to be leaving the county. I want to enjoy it and do that fly fishing that I wanted to, that I came here for. But we have been asking the jurisdictions to consider an increase in their Contribution of membership toward the EDC Is very preliminary at this point, and we'll be back to talk with you more specifically about that. But Fact of the matter is that The replacement for me is probably going to warrant a salary 20 to 30% Higher than what I've been paid over the last 11 and a half years. And it's time for the The county as a whole to kind of face the reality that If you want to attract talent into this position and keep going what we've had going. We're going to need to have a little bit more contribution from everybody. So We'll be back to talk with you about what that looks like specifically. But I wanted to put that out there and have you hear it from me In terms of my longevity. It's been a great job and a great run and a lot of great support from the town. I want to Tell you 11 and a half years ago, I'd see Joel on the line. We were walking down Main Street and We were waiting for the tumbleweeds to kind of blow down Main Street. I think there were two businesses On Main Street and look at it now. So We're proud of the partnership we've had with the Town of Buena Vista and want to continue that. I don't know if Carlin or Dave Have any further comments, but that's my report, Mr. Mayor, and it's been a pleasure also working with you Of the town staff and the trustee board to accomplish what we've accomplished.
Thank you, Wendell. Carlin, do you have anything you'd like to add or Dave?
This is Dave. I'll go first real quickly. I'm not sure that there's much I could Follow on with what Wendell said as, as per usual. Thanks, Wendell, for really driving that home. But You know, even though the EDC is countywide. It's, it's easy to recognize that this is our home and we're proud of this place. And we will continue to work on projects that Span this county, but derive significant value for the county and For those places that we all love and we enjoy being and That we are all passionate about, which is why, you know, at eight o'clock at night, we're all still connecting together. And yeah, I think that's really all I have to add on to that is This is a great organization that I think that on behalf of the board that it's, I'm proud of and Especially given everything that's happened this year. It's, it's been a great organization to be a part of and to have a board That's willing to step up and has stepped up significantly and will continue to do so for You know, all the great reasons that we love for why we're here.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. I just have two quick comments. First, you know, I'm on these meetings. You guys see me all the time on these meetings every week. It's Blake Bennett and I are date night. We joke about it, but in all, in all seriousness, it is It's really important to me to participate in these meetings and to be on the EDC board. This community, Buena Vista in particular, helped raise me. And here we are Dealing with coronavirus and a growing economy, and it's an honor to be part of this board and to be serving this community in this role. Regarding Wendell's retirement, that's a, that's a joke, everyone. There's no way we're ever letting Wendell go. But in all seriousness, that, that is a process that we are going to start working on is Wendell's eventual retirement. And, and then looking down the road, COVID is not, is not remedied yet. It's still a major issue in this community, and it's something that we have our eyes on. We got the Business Coalition put together so they can really be the point of contact for the individual businesses. And it allows us to stay focused on the, on the greater county aspects, things like affordable housing, New businesses in the community, promoting these opportunity zones, and then also figuring out what the next steps are. You know, trustee Swisher, you've brought up in the past, and I believe other trustees have brought up in the past, the need to diversify our economy, and that's why the EDC exists. Tourism is a baked in piece of our economy. Now we need to really do the hard work of figuring out how we, we can survive without tourism. If we, if, if something were to happen without With no tourism, how, how does this community survive and how do we go on? So I thank you for your time and thank you guys for your, for your attention to the EDC and your support of the EDC. We We enjoy supporting you guys as well. So thank you.
Yeah, I just also wanted to call out trustee Volpe. He started this mess with us too. Way back when we were trying to figure out, you know, what we were going to be when we grow up and You know, we've done a lot of growing and you should, you should really be proud of what's happening. What has happened and what is happening in Buena Vista. The couples that I've been talking with that want to come here, two of the three, for whatever that's worth, have said We think we want to be in Buena Vista because there's a lot going on there. We want to be on the ground floor. So These are impressive people coming from the front range that just want to be here. But I do appreciate all the Hard work you all have done and look forward to these conversations after the first of the year on You know, what we do about tourism and outdoor recreation. I think it's a timely Conversation to really determine, you know, the future direction of the community.
Thank you, Wendell. Carlin, Dave, thank you a lot. You guys are putting out a lot of effort into this and I know the past five, six months been pretty tough. Been a lot going on. Wendell, we really appreciate what you've done. Don't give up yet. We're not. And you know, it's, it's the silent people. And I don't want to put it that way because Wendell, you're not silent. But it's the, what's the unknown that's going on behind the scenes that people don't see? They don't recognize the importance of the EDC and In the years that I've been on the board, Little things come out and that's what makes the difference. And I just want to tell you, I appreciate what you guys do. There's a lot you do behind the scenes that nobody ever hears about. Really don't. Trustees, any comments for Wendell? Thank you, Wendell. We appreciate your time. Dave, you, Carlin, you guys keep it up.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Wendell. Next item on the agenda is the Texaco lease and South Main Agreement amendments. All I see on here are two things. It says staff. And then on Philip's paperwork, it says 15 minutes. So I'm going, you know, this sounds pretty good.
All right, we'll give it a try. And I'll do my best because I'm going to hand it to Joel.
All right.
Pressure. So trustees, this is, this is a topic that we've discussed in negotiations and executive session. And so we're bringing this forward after working with On the agreement. For the public, the, so this is a proposal that resolves two things for town, the community as a whole, one. It will get rid of the Texaco building on the corner. And turn that, at least beautify it temporarily for town as a little entryway, however we want to Design it until a appropriate building is put together. Two, it will kind of negate this, kind of will resolve this outstanding issue that we have with What happens at the intersection of South Main and East Main? And some outstanding questions on what the design was, what it could have been, what it could be, who pays for it, when does it happen? And kind of Kind of wipe that, wipe that away in, in exchange for This lease on the Texaco building and getting rid of that. You guys might remember Some long history of us trying to figure out what to do with that Texaco building, working with the EDC To maybe acquire it, ended up getting to the Chaffey County Arts Council and they couldn't. They had to sell it. And so the property owner got it. So The guts of the lease. So first of all, in the, in the memo, I say, and there are four things for us to take a look at, but there are really only Two resolutions to pass if you want. One is approving the signing of the lease and the other is related to the South Main Development Agreement. Just doing the amendment to that. Regarding the lease, the way we have it is After done motion And it This, the South End Company or the other organization that like the actual, it's kind of, kind of some of the same people. But they'll tear down the building, level the, level the ground, and then the town at that point can take and start a lease On that property. And we can put boulders in it. We can put grass in it. We can put trees in it, whatever we want. It's a five-year lease, $5 per year. And it will continue Forever until a building comes forward to be put on that Property. That building, the town can review it. We don't, it's beyond our, just our code. We can Review it according to South Main Development Standards. So it's a really cool Building on that entryway in the corner into town, the main street. If we want, you know, five years, if we decide, wait, let's let Jed build this building, we can Get out in three years or four years, whatever we all want to decide to, decide to do. But it's At least five years, five bucks a year. And then the amendment to the South Main is they just don't Have to build that roundabout down there. And we say, yeah, that T intersection that we have is Fine, and let's just not worry about it and let's move on. Jeff has looked through all this info. He created most of the info and we adapted the The lease agreement a little bit with Jed's input and Jed's cool with it. And so opened it up to the trustees For consideration of approving the two resolutions.
Anybody have any questions for Joel at this point? Go ahead, Dave.
I've got one about architectural review. Is that I guess I should have read it, read below closer, but is that, is that defined what that really means? Or does that just mean we get to see the plans?
Well, it was, we, we have input to it. And in fact, Jed Encouraged us to add according to South Main Standards. And even if we wanted to, it doesn't say we have to, but if we wanted to, it could, we could require That South Main to actually review, you know, if he were to sell the property or something, but South Main to review it. So we've got a good And we have to have approval. So whatever we define at that time.
If I may, the, the town UDC does have architectural review requirements for anything on Main Street. So That is in our UDC right now.
Yeah, that's great, Mark. And so this adds that layer of up to South Main Development Standards. So I mean, the idea is to have a really cool building, not just some, some of You know, hokey shop that goes on there. So.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions for Joel at this point? Comments? Go ahead, Libby.
Um, this is also a question for Jeff. Do we need to concern ourselves at all with Do we need to concern ourselves at all with the different owners of these different projects? I mean, you know, Joel referred to that, that there are some people in common, but really Texaco is owned by somebody different than South Main. And do we feel like we're okay with tying these two agreements together, even though they deal with different entities?
Yeah, that's actually a great question. And so the condition of the next item you're going to consider, which is the special, actually, we're going to go here right now while we're here, which is the amendment to the development agreement. Basically, it's conditioned upon compliance with this agreement. And so ultimately, the fact that they're owned by different entities doesn't change that condition. I think that's a really good question, though. I think that ultimately, as long as the condition remains accurate and it's being highlighted right now. I'm reading that while I'm talking, sorry for the fumbling there. But I think that ultimately, as long as that's conditioned, is either satisfied or not satisfied. It doesn't matter which party, which entity is involved with the agreement or the provision dealing with South Main. So I think it's a good question. I think we're covered.
Hey, thank you, Libby. Thank you, Jeff. Amy, you have something?
Sure, thanks. So I didn't see anyone in the lease, if SPP sells that lot. Is that in there somewhere and I just missed it?
Yeah, there's a, and Jeff can point it out.
It runs with the land, so the obligation continues regardless of who's an assinier who buys the property.
Great. And then I think for, I think just a suggestion for designing of that lot, obviously, we don't want to, town maybe might not want to invest a lot of money into it because it's going to probably be built on, but, you know, it's such a high visible area. I'm wondering if we could do maybe an RFP for an urban designer to just make sure that that corner is really excellent. And then in addition to that, I read the beautification committee is looking at possibly a kinetic structure sculpture for public art on the McPhelamy Corner. So it would be great for those two corners in particular to really have some, I would say, professional design in some way, or at least if we could maybe get, figure out how much something like that would cost. I think that would serve us well, especially if maybe it doesn't get built on and it stays there 10 years.
Thank you, Amy. Jeff, the comment, question I have. How is this, we cannot obligate future boards on the lease? How is that addressed?
You can enter into an agreement like a lease like this, it still would be subject to annual appropriation under the law. But that's just like an inherent obligation, or inherent, I guess, law that would affect any town agreement. So if the town doesn't pay its $5 every year, well, then the town would basically no longer be LSC under the lease. I mean, the damages that could be asserted against the town would only be, you know, 20 bucks or something, depending on what year you're in. But ultimately, it's still subject to annual appropriation. And if you don't appropriate, or new board doesn't appropriate, you have no further obligations.
Gotcha. And actually, all I just wanted to point out that that is a concern whenever you enter into a lease agreement, that you are counting on future boards to continue that agreement.
Yeah, and we actually have a non-appropriation clause in the lease, which we put in any agreement that the town entered into that would be more than a single fiscal year. So it basically excuses performance if you don't appropriate funds every year.
Gotcha. And I'm sure, I don't know, I'm thinking that Philip would chip in five bucks and keep the lease going anyway.
Yeah, so ultimately, so I mean, I actually probably misspoke a little bit. Ultimately, there would be no breach because you didn't appropriate, and the lease would just end.
It would just end. Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have a question?
Joel was going to say something about design or RFP, I think.
I just was going to mention that we, I mean, the idea would be by summertime, we have something up there. And so to build in a few months of like getting the beautification committee together, you know, and processing this whole design thing, so.
What do you, do you guys have?
I'm sorry, and see how much money we want to spend, if anything, you know, or when that would be, that kind of stuff, so.
Who would design it if we didn't have a?
That is part of the question to be asked.
You know, can I actually just revisit Trustee Fay's comment earlier for a moment?
Please.
And frankly, it's a really good comment. And I read through our amendment to the Plan Unit Development Agreement. Again, while I was trying to answer her question, and it actually isn't perfectly accurate because the developer is actually going to be South Main Development, Inc. And the owner of the Texaco Station is SPP, something, I'll have it in front of me quickly. I do think that actually her comment is a great one because the developer really can't lease that property because it's South Main. It's not SPP. But I think it can accomplish the same thing with some quick wording change to the actual amendment to the Plan Unit Development Agreement to basically address that they're basically separate entities, but we can still condition the excuse for building the roundabout upon compliance or the lease being complied with by SPP. So I actually, frankly, I should have caught it, and I just didn't. So I want to thank Trustee Fay. I never want to pretend like I did something right when I think I actually may have made a mistake here. And I think we could just make some language revisions to condition the roundabout excuse upon continued compliance with the lease by SPP. And we do know they're the same principals who control them, and we can address that as well. But maybe if you want to approve this, you could approve it with some wording change to address the issue of there being two developers, and I'll remedy that tomorrow. I don't think it changes the intent of what we're doing, but I do think it's a technical issue that we should probably address. So my apologies for not catching that up front, actually.
That's why we have a board, Jeff.
Well, you have an attorney too, so I just wish I had.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Thank you, Libby.
Yeah, well, not to make an excuse, but I think we actually didn't have the name of the actual entity. When I drafted these, I should have recognized that we have different ones now. So I appreciate Trustee Fay's comment. I wanted to.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate your attention to it because it does make me nervous, but I'm sure you can fix it up.
Yeah, no, we can. And I just wish I had read it quickly when I was talking to you the first time, so it's a good point.
So when I look at this, Jeff, and we're looking at two different resolutions, that would not affect Resolution Number 59, am I correct?
Which is the first one approving the lease.
Right. Okay, so that resolution, if the board wishes, we could entertain a motion to approve that resolution as it stands or deny it. That's up to the board. And then we could go on to the second, Resolution Number 60, and discuss that one as amended. So board, if you wish to look at Resolution Number 59, approve the lease agreement. Could I have a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 59.
Thank you, Devin.
Extein, second.
Second, Extein. So further discussion, questions, trustees? Didn't sound like anybody was really jumping all over this. Further comment? Roll call, vote?
Trustee Extein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher? Trustee Swisher?
I was muted, sorry. Yes.
No worries. Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Now let's move on to the principle and the body of Resolution Number 60. And basically, this is just the agreement with the South Main Amendment to the agreement with them. And Jeff, you're looking at a separate whereas, is that what you would be thinking of, or?
Well, you know, actually, in my quick look at it, if you just step down beyond the whereas clauses to Section 1.
Yes.
I think what I would do is I would change that to say, "Developers' Obligation Set forth in Section 10A of the Initial Development Agreement", which is the roundabout, shall be excused, provided, and then I would basically say, "SPP, which is the owner of the Texaco Station, prepares the Texaco Station as required by Section 1 of the lease agreement. The town accepts the condition of the Texaco Station property. The lease term commences and SPP does not breach the lease agreement during its term." And then I would probably make a couple of adjustments to the whereas clause to explain how SPP owns a Texaco Station and how they're basically commonly controlled entities, so we're clear why we're doing that. That would be my suggested revisions.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. Questions, trustees? Does that make sense to you?
It did.
Okay. Joel, does that make, you have any comments on that? That make sense?
Yeah, I think that's fantastic.
It's a good catch, Libby. It really is. And thank you, Jeff.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I've got a comment from Mark Doring. He's mentioning that we'll make sure that it applies to SPP and any of SPP's, you know, signs or anything like that, so.
Gotcha. Sure. Thank you, Mark, for input. And thank you, Jeff. So we would entertain a motion as amended or per amendment by Attorney Parker stating such as he has just stated to us. So approve or deny?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 60, Series 2020, as amended.
Thank you, Amy.
Second.
Second, was that you, Norm?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Further discussion, trustees? Roll call, vote?
Trustee Extein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, Joel, Jeff, Mark, everybody that had input. This is a big step, really. I really think it is. It's going to be good for town.
Thank you all.
Next item is Item D, Code Enforcement Citation Ordinance. We're going to consider amending Chapter 2, Section 99 of the Municipal Code for Penalty Assessments. And here I see that, Grant, you're going to be bringing that forward to us?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So thank you, Board, for having me here again tonight. I bring before you an ordinance that outlines the process in which we begin to assess penalties against certain sections of our code. We have looked at what violations and penalty assessments should be applied to and where they will be the most beneficial. What we have come up with is as follows. Committing of a nuisance unlawful, snow and ice, unlawful use of trash, weeds and brush, dogs at large, parking on private property, parking on public property, short-term, long-term parking of recreational vehicles and utility trailers, camping on private property and camping on public property. We feel like these are the most common violations we see and ones that could be, they could have the most added benefit to being assessed rather than using our current method of summons and complaint. The process will as follows. If a violation is found that needs to be assessed, then the officer will issue assessment with a fee to be set by our resolution at the following meeting. If the offender either feels like it is not representative of what they see or fails to pay within 20 days after the issuance of the assessment, it will automatically be moved to the summons to the court. We are requesting that the board approve, approve with amendments or deny this ordinance. And if passed, we will bring a resolution to the board in the next meeting setting the penalty assessment amounts. Are there any questions, feedback, or comments?
Trustees, any comments? Questions for Grant? I would entertain a motion to request that staff brings us a resolution at the next meeting.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
You know, I, just so, I feel like I want to explain, I'm not voting to pass this ordinance. I think this is a big step. It's different than what I had originally understood it at the last meeting. I think to have a step forward like this, we definitely want to make sure it's done properly. And I think we want to make sure this is a good use of resources. And above all that, we need to be willing to accept any unintended consequences for this. I'm not saying this isn't something we can look at in the future, but I would like to see more work done on this. I think I could use some more education on this, so that therefore.
Can you speak to that?
And then, so that is why I would say I'm probably not going to move forward with this ordinance. But sure, of course, Grant.
So I've been at this job since 2017, been working with what we currently have in the code. What I'm bringing forward is something that at first didn't think was going to be moved this way, but as time has moved, I've noticed this is something that we can use as a tool. It's not necessarily a step that we're always going to be taking, but it's just another step to gain compliance with our code, which is why we're limiting it and not opening up the code to all penalty assessment. It's been, I feel like we have studied it. We've given it the time that I've been in the office, working with what we have. And we're bringing something that is thoughtful and does look at the consequences and has been discussed.
Thank you, Grant. Other questions, trustees? And I would entertain a motion if anybody would like to make one, one way or another.
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, Dave, to do what?
Back to us.
Okay, thank you.
Second motion.
Thank you, Libby, second. Further discussion?
Just real quick, Mayor, I want to make sure we got an understanding of the motion made. So before you use Ordinance Number 15, and then we would follow on, if this is approved, bring back a resolution for the board to set the actual fine or the penalty assessment amounts. So I just want to make sure I understood that motion. Was it to approve Resolution 15? I'm sorry, Ordinance Number 15, or was it something else?
I misspoke. I apologize. Yes, I motioned to approve Ordinance Number 15.
And you still, and you still second that one? Thank you, Libby.
Yeah.
Yep, further discussion?
Question before we vote. What kind of consequences are you worried about, Amy?
So I think looking at, and again, I think this could just require more work. Let's just talk about camping on private property. What if, so a family, if this, we might not like campers, but they, their role in our community is changing. Campers can be a sign of affordable housing problem. So what I get concerned with is a family of three living in a camper on private property. Isn't that, aren't we evicting someone? So that is a concern. I thought this was to move things out of the court system, but dogs at large, if someone, from what I understand, if I'm reading it, someone gets a ticket for a dog at large. If they don't pay it in 20 days, they end up in court, if I read it correctly. And again, we can go through all, these were just red flags. I was like, is this the way it's going to be? Also, I question, is our town employee, so is Grant going to have to go to court for all these hearings? What happens if Grant, I think Grant is excellent dealing with the public. What happens if we get a new code enforcement officer that cites everyone? And again, maybe this is the right way to go, but once we start down this road and people, I'm just concerned we're not going to be able to change it. And I think above all, we really need to look at recreational vehicles in our town because it's a form of affordable housing. And slightly as it is, this is kind of what we're with. So that's just some of the reasons that I feel like for us moving forward, I would say, let's stop. I would want to look into this further. Thanks. Thanks, Cindy, for asking. You're welcome.
Comment, Cindy?
No, no comment, but thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to change anybody's mind. I just wanted to make sure that trustee Eckstein has a full explanation of how this actually works. So all these offenses are still in the code right now. And so without this ordinance, they would all go to county court with a citation. None of them would have the opportunity to just get a ticket and then pay it and not even bother with county court. So doesn't change any of the substantive violations. It just gives another vehicle, another means to hopefully have less people go to county court if the same number of citations are issued. It just is a way to avoid having people go to court, having to testify. You know, the flip side is it could result in maybe more citations being issued because they're easier to issue, less burden, et cetera, but just to be clear.
That's the thing, is if tickets start writing, if more, they will end up, they still, if they're not paid within twenty days, then it goes to court, right?
Yeah.
And what happens now if there's a citation? It could just goes right to court?
Yeah, that's right.
So I just think we want to be really clear on, especially, like I said, the campers, because we could be, I mean, if someone's cited, I mean, we'd have to evict them, right?
Well, I mean, we wouldn't be doing any, like, any evictions, but every day they're still, still there camping illegally, there's another possibility for another citation, so.
And I agree, Mayor, it's in the code. I just want to make sure our code is dialed before we move forward with enforcement of it. And I think camp, excuse me, Mayor, so that's kind of where I was coming from.
Yeah, sure. I see what you're saying, but you're looking at changing the code is what you're saying.
I think at least reviewing of it, yeah. Because what happens if we start citing, we start offering all these citations, I mean, weeds and, weeds and brush, is that, I mean, is that even an issue? I just wonder if we should be putting our town resources on it, Mayor, this kind of what, what I'm thinking.
Well, what I'm, I guess what you're missing, I see, is the resources are already on it, if that makes sense, because Grant is already faced with all of these things. And so as the attorney put it, if he writes a citation for snow and ice, he's already involved. It already has to go to municipal court. There is no if and or but. But this way, Grant can go to them, contact them, give them the opportunity to not go to court and not take up more time, just pay a fine and fix the problem. Right now, there is no option to do that.
I just want to make sure we're down, like, we're a hundred percent on these policies, Mayor. I got to be honest with you. I just feel like it's a big step. But that's just me.
We got to, we've got to start someplace. And I think with doing this and giving them the opportunity to pay instead of going to court, it's, it's the right place to start.
Also, I think with Grant, he communicates with the property owners first, probably before he even writes a citation.
I agree. I'm just wondering, what happens if the next code enforcer doesn't, is, you know, I think Grant's great. Obviously, I trust Grant. Grant's awesome. I'm just thinking, I, I think the issue is I'm questioning some of, I just want to make sure we're super dialed on our policies before we move forward with code enforcement, but that's, it sounds like I'm the only one.
Trustees? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Eckstein?
No.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Switzer?
You're muted, Cindy.
Trustee Switzer?
Sorry. Yes.
Trustee Buppi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's a five-one vote. Thank you very much. Next would be to, correct me if I'm wrong, Philip, we want to direct staff to bring us the, I lost my place. We're wanting an ordinance now, correct?
Yeah, we, we will bring forward a resolution that lets the board set the penalty assessments.
Got you. And those, are those already in the books, Jeff?
No, you'd have to basically pick what you want.
Okay, thank you. And Grant, you're working all on that, I'm sure.
Yeah, we've been talking with Jeff on what those will look like, and we'll bring a resolution at the next meeting on what we are proposing, and we can discuss how the board feels about that at that time.
Okay, do you need that in a motion, Philip?
No, we're good to go. It was, it was put in, it was put in the memo that way, so we'll follow through on that.
Great, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, thank you, trustees. Next item is the extension of the COVID nineteen temporary use permit and the CVRF allocation. We were asked at the last meeting to give consideration to this. Who is presenting? Philip, are you starting this?
It'll be me, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'll try to hold my own. Staff's done a great job tonight, so I've combined a couple of topics into this one theme under COVID relief funds and what the town's been doing with our temporary, or temporary modification of premise and really what we're calling the COVID temporary use permits. So we'll start with that part of it. So as I tried to explain a little bit of background, so the board passed a resolution back in May that directed staff to form a process with a set fee that would allow us to work with businesses on kind of a variety of things. Extension of premise, extension of liquor premise, utilizing parking spaces, and even utilizing temporary structures. So two, two basic questions for the board tonight. That resolution was worded in a way that this would be indefinite, because we didn't know how long the pandemic would last. We also knew that we were following and tracking what the statewide, or the statewide things were were happening there, especially around liquor. So the board approved a resolution that gave us some flexibility on end dates. However, as part of that discussion, the board felt comfortable starting with about a hundred and eighty days duration for, for these initial permits. And so we've, we've had six of those permits. Three of them have indicated that they would like to extend their, their permits, and they're set to expire in November. So staff is looking for direction from the board. We feel like we have flexibility under the resolution. However, we wanted to honor the original discussion and make sure the board was comfortable with us continuing to work with, with businesses on those permits. In addition to the existing, we also have new, potential new permits. And with winter, what the discussion mainly has been about is utilizing spaces differently and using temporary structures such as tents to expand seating space and so on. So staff, we do have existing code that deals with temporary structures, temporary use requests, but we really like this process because it's, theoretically, it's, it's quicker and the fee is less. So we'd like to continue to use this permit process as a way to work with businesses until we get into next summer, is really what we're looking at. Paula can correct me if I'm wrong, but right now we're looking at kind of staying in parallel, staying in tandem with the state when it comes to what they're doing with some of the liquor, the temporary liquor rules, which right now have been extended through the end of July. And we were hearing pretty confidently that they're going to extend that through October twenty twenty-one, so we'd like to, to get the board's approval to continue to, to have this flexibility and utilize this process. So I'll pause there. Any questions on that part?
Trustees, questions? Looks like you're good, Philip. No questions.
Okay, Apollo, do you feel like you have what you need on the permits side?
The permits side, so we're looking at going at the same timeframe as the state. Then as far as our length of our permit.
So for example, we, we may extend three of the existing through the end of July, and then if the state extends theirs, their liquor, temporary liquor rules through the end of October, then staff would consider extending those if it's requested by the businesses through October. Is that okay?
Trustees?
I would say yes.
Thank you, Norm.
Me too. I like the idea.
Okay, Libby?
I agree as well.
Okay, Cindy?
I agree.
Dave?
Agreed.
Amy? Okay, sounds like that's good and we like that concept. And I don't know if this falls into here, and I think it kind of does. What kind of oversight is there on a temporary structure that's put up for winter?
Great question. That's a great question. We're all learning that together. So what we've, what we've combined, specific to the temporary structure is there would be an expiration date, and that's, that's really from a zoning standpoint. We don't, we don't want the structures to be there, somebody to really abuse that, so there will be sorry, an end date on the permit from that standpoint. Then we pull in the fire department, if there's heating or electricity, that kind of the fire code aspect to it, because there are fire codes around it. And then we pull in the building department to, to review the structure, and they're mainly looking at the snow and wind loads of the structure. So the front office staff, planning staff, really is going to serve as the coordinator between those entities so that the, ideally, the business owner's not running around to each entity to get, to get it done.
Okay. I, you know, it just popped in my head, and I knew you guys had it covered, so I don't even know why I asked.
That's good.
You're good. You guys are good. Any other questions? Okay, next section, Philip, go ahead.
Next section. We wanted to bring back the, the discussion and get some, some general guidance as we get into November. So we have two months left, basically, of, of utilizing our coronavirus relief funds for DOLA. And we have done a great job, I think, balancing the use of this money so far, two hundred and fifty-three thousand. You can see the breakdown there. A hundred and, a hundred and thirty at the time of writing this memo, and we'll, we'll come back to this part in just a second. But we've allocated a good chunk of it to small business, local business relief. About forty-five thousand to nonprofits. Thirty-three thousand went to the individuals and families through the emergency response fund. And then town staff utilized a little over twenty-four thousand so far on a variety of things around town as we've gone through this, which leaves us with a little bit of balance that's unallocated. Now, an email I sent to the board earlier, we discovered today that we over-allocated the business relief fund by eleven thousand five hundred dollars. So what that means is we awarded and we paid out one hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars to the local business grant program, which leaves us really with, with around ten thousand dollars, nine, ninety-five hundred to ten thousand dollars of unallocated balance. So staff regrets that. We don't like to make those kinds of mistakes. The board approved one hundred and thirty thousand. I'll, I'll say that we, we went lean and mean and quick with this process, and the main focus that I gave staff was to get the money out quickly and into the hands of the businesses. And we made a mistake, so I apologize for that. But I think we had, we had wiggle room, and I hope the board is okay with, with that. And we would like to kind of talk about, so we have about ten thousand dollars left. And we could, in the memo, you'll see there a couple of different thoughts. We could hold that money through the, towards the end of November to see if anything pops up. And at that time, we could talk at the November twenty-fourth board meeting and say if we haven't utilized it for something else that town faces, we could combine it with what the county has. So the county has come forward with a business grant program through Chaffey Community Foundation of a hundred and fifty thousand, so businesses have yet another avenue for funds, especially those that haven't, haven't received any grant funding yet. So we could look to contribute to that towards the end of November. We could move forward and contribute that now. So I'll pause there. Any questions or thoughts on that?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Mistakes happen. It, it's no biggie that extra was given out. Is, do you still have applications from businesses where we had run out of funds and they didn't get any?
Michelle?
Yes, there's three applications that I received. One was incomplete and two were after everything had been allocated. So if, if you guys decided to go ahead and allocate that ten thousand, it would, it would be used and then we would still have one that wouldn't, wouldn't get anything, so.
And so I have another comment. The businesses where the funds had been depleted, they could apply and try and get the county's funds that is available?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, since they can apply to the county, it would kind of make sense to hold on to that to see if the town has additional expenses that they're going to have to spend and then decide at the November twenty-fourth board meeting whether the town is going to have additional expenses or not. And we could allocate it then. It's my opinion.
Thank you, Cindy. Philip, do you want to elaborate a little bit on that second bullet point? As to, is, that is a, taking into account the DOLA restriction, correct? Or is it not?
Are you speaking at this bullet point here?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it really was, is, is exactly what trustee Switzer just described. Hold, hold the money until the twenty-fourth and then make a decision if we have any remaining funds to combine it with the county or, or if, if Michelle still has a couple of businesses that haven't received anything through the county, go ahead and utilize it for the, the grant funding. That's all that was trying to say.
Right, and that's because we have to make that decision, what, is it by the first of the, first of the month or at the end of the year?
We have to, we have to indicate by December first if we, if we anticipate having any money left over. So that's why I wanted that November twenty-fourth, a pretty definitive plan, so that we could utilize all the funds.
Okay, and that's kind of what I just wanted to bring forward to the trustees, so we can, we can make a decision now, and that's not a problem, but we can also wait until the twenty-fourth, but we have to decide on the twenty-fourth. So keeping that in mind, just saying.
Philip, do you foresee any of the money that was given to the community foundation for kind of early childhood or high risk, is that accounted for, or do you foresee any of that coming back if, say, the county can't find a home for it?
So far, we received an invoice, Michelle, I think it was eleven thousand dollars. And then we, Joseph gave us an indication a second invoice is coming soon. So I think they're well on their way to allocating that out. I know that the, the nonprofit part of it, I think, is what's going faster than the early childhood or the youth support, because schools have mostly been in service. So I think that they may look, if, if they get into the latter part of November and the youth support is not taking up the money, they may shift or they may come back to us and say, hey, let's, let's, what do you think about allocating the rest of it to the nonprofit side? I expect it to be used.
Two nonprofits that applied. Two nonprofits that applied for our business grant, and I referred them over to the Chaffee County Foundation for the nonprofit.
Does that answer your question, Amy?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's just thanks to the trustees in town on behalf of a business and the businesses here. I mean, it's just I've spoken to business owners. They're just so appreciative and thankful of it. So that's awesome that everyone pulled together for that. I think maybe another option I know might be difficult is there's a high number of vacancy vacancies on the highway on East Main Street. I'm just wondering if any of that can go towards snow removal, sidewalk snow removal. I obviously would have to be paid ahead of time. But that's something I'm just noticing with all the vacancies. Is it going to start to become a problem? And then also, too, I think it might be, you know, sometimes some of the older older folks are having difficulty clearing snow. I help some folks clear snow, but I'm just wondering if that's that's just one option if if there's money left over.
Not with this money, not with this money. They're they're kicking through my reimbursement requests.
Oh, really? Okay, forget it. Not if like vacant businesses, no. Okay, yeah.
No, it has to be directly related to COVID.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Mayor, can I say something?
Go ahead, you bet.
Yeah, with that $11,000 override, I would call it, to the local business, I don't think that that is a problem at all. I that went to a good to a good cause. With the remaining money, I have to kind of with Cindy, and we had to put it with the county's money for right now in case we need it towards the end of the year.
So what you're thinking, Norm, is hold it, make a decision on the 24th? Is that what you're thinking?
I think we ought to make a decision tonight.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we make the decision tonight to take the overabundance of money and put it towards the county's $150,000 along with ours for business grants.
I have a motion. Would anybody like to second?
X-Stein second.
Thank you, Amy. Further discussion? Roll call vote. Oh, go ahead, Libby. I'm sorry.
I just, I feel like I'd rather keep that money local. I mean, since we know we already have the applications from our own local businesses, it rather than having it just get absorbed into the county's 150,000. So and then I also would feel like there really is a chance that we might need it ourselves. So that's why I like the November 24th meeting and deciding at that point what to do with it.
Okay, thank you for your input, Libby. Anybody else?
Yeah, I agree with trustee Fay that I'd like to wait to see if we would need it between now and then and make that decision on the 24th.
Okay, thank you. We do have a motion and a second on the table. I will call roll call vote. And go from there. We'll have further discussion depending on the vote. Thank you. Go ahead, roll call vote.
Trustee X-Stein.
Yep, wait, stop. I didn't say, I'm debating based on what trustee Fay said to keep the money local, so I'm going to say no.
Thank you.
Trustee Fay.
No.
Trustee Nyberg.
I gotta agree with Libby. I'll say no.
Trustee Rome.
No.
Trustee Switzer. Trustee Switzer.
I'm going to say, I wanted to hang on to the money till the 24th. The businesses in town that did not get money, they can apply to the county. And I just don't know what additional expenses the town will have. So I'm a no.
Trustee Blopie.
No.
Okay, thank you. And and understandable. Just because it's a yes or a motion doesn't necessarily mean that's what you're approving. You just want to get further discussion, so that's all okay.
Further discussion is key.
It's key.
It's key.
Yep, so I would entertain a motion to keep things moving if you would like to make a motion to hold that money until the November 24th meeting and make a decision then.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Norm. Thank you, Cindy. Further discussion? Roll call vote.
X-Stein, yes.
Hang on. Guys, it's time. Okay, trustee X-Stein.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Rome.
Yes.
Trustee Switzer.
Yes.
And trustee Blopie.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Norm.
Okay, it looks like next item is the third quarter financial status report. I don't know who that is. Go ahead, Michelle.
You're on mute, Michelle.
Michelle, you're muted.
There we go.
It would have been quicker.
What?
That wasn't nice, I know. Go ahead.
All this abuse I take. I appreciate Philip having my back, but the error was mine. And it was actually two two extra that didn't get on the on the spreadsheet. Got paid out before I started the spreadsheet for tracking, so I and I apologize for that. Anyways, moving on. This is my third quarter report. It's on page 49 of the packet. And so I have attached the following. I've all I've attached the sales tax chart and the remote seller chart again, so you don't have to scroll through all of all of Wow. Report, the investment register and quarter quarters three budget to actual report. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just got a pop up that said my internet connection was unstable, so.
Yeah, I think we had a countywide little burp there because we got it too. I think everything's good now.
Okay, all right. Anyways, I have attached all those charts, and I will go through them with you. Again, the sales tax through August of 2020. We've collected to date now $2.6 million, which is $358,000 higher than January through August of 2019. It's also $267,000 higher in excess of budget. And so that is the same as what was in my other report. And of the 284,000, so Amy, here's the breakdown. 358 is is town and county. And of that, 284 is identified as town sales tax.
Yeah, can I ask? Okay, I'll wait till you're done. I had one more question.
Go ahead.
So the reason I bring it up about brick and mortar businesses. And I did look year to date, and I won't, maybe we can meet up outside of it. But brick and mortar business in town BV is not up. I'm seeing it as down. I added up the gray numbers from January through August for both of them.
Brick and mortar, correct.
Yes.
Town, town sales tax is up.
Because of remote sellers, right?
Primarily, yes.
Yep, and I think the reason in addition to that, moving into COVID, we've lost a ton of businesses. The reason that's an issue, our community wants a vibrant downtown core. And it is dying right now. We were having trouble before COVID. So I just want to at least raise awareness or acknowledge that things aren't spectacular. I know there's always this discussion of sales tax is great, sales tax is great. But really, until I looked at this, that's that's who's paying for our schools. Amazon's not paying for our schools, so I just just want to at least acknowledge that that
No.
What's going on.
That doesn't pay for schools.
That's what I mean. So but brick and mortars, if we lose our brick and mortars, those are the
Right.
that's who's paying. That's our mill levy. That's so that's just something I'm I'm concerned about. And I think just because sales tax is up, because what I find is happening with our downtown or what I get concerned with is without a vibrant core, you start to feel like a tourist trap. That is my biggest concern. And I just thank you for hearing it out. I don't know. I don't even know what the answer is, but man, it's terrible to see.
So something that may give you comfort is a different paradigm looking at the the remote sales tax. What would happen if we didn't get sales tax from remote online purchases would be that the people would go go to Colorado Springs or Denver or simply order online anyways, and we would not get that sales tax. So the remote seller portion of this is really a gift of Wayfair versus South Dakota and Colorado passing their own laws to enact that legislation. So it is it is not brick and mortar. You're right. But without being able to collect that sales tax, it would be lost.
I know, yep. And I know I'm super stoked about that, thank goodness. But I just, I just want to say to the trustees, I just want to, this is what I see happening, and it is really hard. And I don't know the exact answer, but we're our downtown core is dying. Just make, that's what I'm seeing by this. Everything's great except our independent business. So I'm just going to leave it at that. I don't know the answer, but man, it is so hard to see.
Michelle, can I say something if you don't mind real quick on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Philip.
I I think, you know, one of the reasons we started breaking out the tracking between remote and and brick and mortar is to to allow the board and staff to begin to decipher between those two, knowing that the remote is going to grow. I I would add that I don't think, at least at least in terms of sales tax, I don't think you can say based on sales tax that our that our brick and mortar is dying. I I would say it's it's almost flat to 2019.
It is, but if you look at the quorum of business in our downtown, that's that's a what's happening is there's so few businesses, we no longer have a vibrant downtown.
And that's a different, that's a different discussion.
We didn't, we didn't
Wait, can I just?
Depression with the COVID. We didn't go down because of COVID.
But the business.
Equal even, and COVID should have knocked the feet out from under us.
But the business, we were losing businesses before COVID, I think. I think what I'm, you know, I this is turning into debate. I don't want it to be a debate. I think I'm more saying to trustees, is anyone else concerned about our independent businesses?
I'll say that I am concerned. I'm not sure what what the ask of the board would be. My my, it's either a chamber discussion or a business alliance of some sort discussion where there if there's an ask of town, and I'm sure that we're here listening. But I I don't, are you suggesting we should lead some effort on behalf of the businesses that haven't asked yet? And I'm just not sure where you're going.
I think we need
But I just don't understand why it's here at the board discussion.
Well, I think our voters value a vibrant downtown core. I think we're losing that. Any other trustee? That's
I honestly don't think that that's
If if I may.
I don't
Excuse me, I think it is a discussion to be had without
You aren't letting me finish.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think it's a discussion to be had in connection with our sales tax reports.
It's to do with our vibrant core.
Totally different discussion.
Libby, you have something?
Yeah, yeah, this has been a concern of mine for quite a while in terms of the sales tax. And I and I appreciate Michelle and Philip putting it together such that we can see the brick and mortar versus the remote sellers. I think that's really important. And I agree with Amy about that we need a vital downtown core. We also need all the employment that that takes place with the local businesses. You know, there there are a lot of jobs that are represented by those businesses. Plus the keeping the profits local on on sales of products or services. So I do think it's an important issue. But thank you for focusing us on it.
Mayor, what do you think?
What do I think?
Yeah.
The mill levy paid by the commercial businesses and residential businesses support the school district. That was the increase in the mill, so we're paying the taxes there. The sales tax does not go to schools. And so I do believe, yes, there is a decline. I will say, ask what Dave said, you're giving us a problem. And he's asking, what should we, what do you want us to do? And you're saying you don't know what to do. What do you want us to do? You bring a problem forward. What do you suggest that we address or look at or propose or try to do?
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
I agree. I think
That could be a further discussion, obviously. Or do you want to go?
I think we need a consensus. I think what is difficult, and Mayor, I'd love to hear your feedback on this, is there isn't really a group that is telling us what our business community needs. I think there's, what could, you're right, what could be done. I think we're watching all these businesses fade away, and there's no one really telling us this is why it's happening. I think we know affordable housing is a bigot one. I think we need someone to tie together the town with the businesses. I think that could be a level of community development, or in this case, community redevelopment. What is, when a business comes to town, who do they interface with? For example, Bread and Salt. This is that was that is that business is a historic building. If you look at Evergreen, how long something functioned in there. It would be awesome if there was a connection to that business. Of course, we can't have our staff do that. I don't think we have the bandwidth for staff. And I don't think there's room to bring someone in, but those are some of the things that can be done to stop the decline. But I think the big, what I really want to bring up was how, I wanted to guess my big step was to acknowledge that things aren't, sales tax is amazing, sales tax is amazing. Our brick and mortars are having problems, I guess, is I just want, I guess, I hope, I'm wondering if trustees feel that way. Acknowledgement, and then I think we can move on. So I guess that was, that's where I'm at with that.
Okay. Cindy? Were you wanting something?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I can relate to the brick and mortar downtown suffering. I do not have a solution to the problem, but part of the problem, as I see it, is diversification. People are COVID buying. They're not spending on the tourist industry right now. They are buying what their families need. If they're on reduced income, they're buying what their family needs, and they're cutting out the extras, and I do not want to offend any business downtown because during a good economy, they're all booming and they're doing well. But if you are cutting back on your expenses, some of the businesses that are on that street is where you're going to cut some of your money back. And until COVID disappears a little bit, and we get back into our booming economy, some of those businesses that are not selling essentials are going to struggle. And I don't have an answer, but that is why I think it's happening.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah.
Okay. Michelle, are you still with us?
I am. Are you ready?
Yes.
The next chart that was attached is the balance sheet. And the balance sheet shows our, our assets and our liabilities, and it shows just basically the financial position of each of the funds in the government. And then, and, and you can look at them, our assets, total 18 million. That includes physical assets. The next chart is the 2020 fund balance indicator, and the, what you need to take away from this particular fund balance is that it's only up through September 30th. So that the unrestricted fund balances reflect, do not reflect the budget adjustment. It, it reflects before the budget adjustment, and only up until September 30th. The next chart just shows the activity in the investment accounts. We currently are seeing 2.7, almost 2.8 million dollars in our bonds. And the last several months have shown, not unexpectedly, a decline in the market value of the bonds, simply because interest rates on investments and treasuries are going down. But we're still pretty well positioned as far as there's still two of our bonds that yield to 2% or higher. And then we have a couple that are yielding below, well, at 0.7 and 0.8%. By comparison, Colorado Trust yields 2.6 and the ba- or I mean, sorry, 0.06, and the bank yields 0.05. So, it's still a better way, still a better place to have our, our money, and it's, it's the water fund money. And then I've also attached a year-to-date budget summary report so that you can see where we're at as far as the budget goes for 2020. And that's, that's the end of my report. I'll take, entertain questions at this time.
Grab any questions for Michelle pertaining to the three-quarter, or the third quarter budget? Go ahead, Libby.
Michelle, when I'm looking at page 53, which is the balance sheet, and, and then I'm looking at page 54, which has a column towards the middle of it, that is the ending fund balance as of 9:30 2020. I don't understand why those numbers are not the same.
I haven't made the transfers yet. I haven't booked the transfers yet.
What, what do you mean by the transfers? I'm sorry.
So just for example, the first line general fund, it says available funds, and then expenditures.
Right.
And inner transfer, for, inner fund transfers out. I haven't booked those yet.
So they, okay, so they haven't run through the balance sheet, they're running through that? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle? And Michelle, don't worry about the interest rates.
If I could do something about them, Mayor, I would definitely do it.
I'll tell you what, 10 years ago, they weren't in an account that drew money. Yeah, so, you know, hey, it's better than what we were doing. Any other questions? Thank you, Michelle. I think you're up next. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on supplemental amendments to the 2020 budget. Board will consider adopting supplemental appropriations to the 2020 budget. And I believe that is Michelle again.
Yeah. So, the report is here on page 60. But what I wanna draw your attention to is, is to go past the resolutions and to look at the 2020 mid-year budget adjustment spreadsheet. And basically, that is, our, the first column is what we adopted in December. The adjustments that we made in the middle, and then the adjusted budget in the third column. And so, I don't know if you guys have this up separately so you can peruse it, or if Philip just needs to slowly scroll some of the adjustments.
Trustees, go ahead, Libby.
So, Michelle, when, when you look at the budget adjustment for sales tax, is that what you estimate it'll be ahead for the whole year, or, or what it's ahead so far for this year?
It's what is ahead so far, it's, it's actuals up to August. Then budget for October, November, and December. September, October, December. So, because I, I wasn't gonna project even higher numbers for the bu- over the budget, because we may not get them. But I'm pretty sure we'll get the budgeted number, so the excess is actually what's the surplus. Thank you.
Does that surplus get, go back, it just goes into the general fund, or?
It falls through to fund balance.
Okay.
And then, we pulled $200,000 off the balance sheet from fund balance for the, what, the fire truck. We took it out of the fire truck, Colorado Trust account. And so I put that on the, on the revenue, so that we weren't upside down. And Philip, you can scroll down a little bit more until you find the next adjustment. That 253,000, that is the COVID relief fund. And we're just going to presume that we are able to spend it all and claim it all, so that's there. Continue. We, we forecast additional revenue for the incident response, and currently, that's about what we're at, plus a little extra as far as the revenue from, from the incident response team. Keep going. I think that's everything until we get to the expenses. So expenditures. This is the transfer into the Chaffey County Community Foundation for the remainder of our what we did for the personal assistance, for the COVID assistance. The $10,000 Chaffey, or Vision Fire Medication, that's what you voted on last meeting. And there's the other side of the $253,000 COVID response. We're increasing, Philip, up a little bit. We're increasing the transfers to the Capital Improvement Fund because of items that were increasing in the Capital Improvement Fund, and you'll be able to look at that in a little, in a minute. So keep on going. That is additional. That is for the, help me with the terminology, Philip.
Academy.
For police. Right?
Correct.
Okay, and keep going. And where, these are the deployment expenses, we're increasing them for the incident response so that it brings it a little closer. Just keep going. Go, go. Yes, keep going. And so it shows $193,000. There you are. $193,000 in the general fund, and 194,000 going through to fund balance increase. Then down here in the water fund is 114,000 out of water fund, fund balance, because that was the tank recoding that got missed in the original budget. And so we pulled that out of fund balance. And the offset to that is a little further down, it's in 02730. Further down.
Further up there.
Right there. Yeah, and so that's a water tank recoding. I believe we're almost done with that project. So that shows the, the, the change. And here's the Capital Improvement Fund. So, here we see this $11,980 is from, is the insurance payout from the police car that got totaled. Here is the 251,000 additional transfer from the general fund. And, and then we're taking out the state and local grant for the Sunset Vista. And then we're taking out the Chaffey County and the Arizona Trail. And we're adding back 3875, that was, had to do with the McPhelme Park shade structure. And so those are all the changes in, in the Capital Improvement Fund revenue, and then these are the changes for, for the Capital Improvement Fund projects. This is the, 21,000 is the town hall roof. The 53 is the replacement for the police vehicle that got totaled. The fire truck is the 200,000. We're taking out the expenditures for the recycle center improvements, because we're not gonna get to that this year, and for the Arizona Trail. And for the circuit workout replacement, we're taking that out. And we are taking out Sunset Vista Park. And then we're adding the 2750 for the shade structure. That is a, I believe it's 90% reimbursement grant, so that's why it was 38 up in the revenue, 27 down here. And that may be all in the Capital Improvement Fund. And the only other one is the Cares Relief Grant for the airport. And that's the revenue. And I believe that's the last. Yep, that's the last of the adjustments. So, I think the next graph is, no, keep going then. Keep going down. Past the Budget Adjustment Register, you're gonna see the fund balance report with the adjustments in it. And this is for the projection for the entire year. So it has budget, revenues and expenditures. And also had, and in those revenues and expenditures are the adjustments that we just looked at. And if we do that, and everything else stays on budget, then the last column will be the unrestricted fund balance for all the, all the funds by the end of the year. That's what I'm projecting. And that would be it. Take any questions you may have.
Yeah, Michelle, I have a question.
Go ahead, Norm.
On that COVID money, do we have, it has to be all accounted for, is that to the state, or is that to the feds?
It's to DOLA. So it's to, DOLA is administering that grant. So that's the Department of Local Affairs, it's a state entity, yes.
Okay, so we just have to dot our i's and cross our t's to appease them?
That's correct, and we have to hold all the documentation for, I believe, three years after the close of the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions for Michelle? Go ahead, Libby.
Somehow I missed the incident of the police vehicle getting totaled. Could somebody enlighten me on that?
Yes, I believe it was back
July.
July, I wanna say.
It was July.
At the time Sergeant Morgan, it was right before Jimmy retired. Sergeant Morgan was in an accident driving his vehicle to, to work, and it was totaled. Actually, it happened right before we had the meeting in person where we recognized Jimmy by proclamation and everything, so Dean had just come back from that accident then, so I think it was reported on back then, but if not, I apologize, it should have been. But the, we just recently got all the details from insurance, and that's where we got the 11,000 and change from the total, from SIRS.
Thank you.
Hey, any other clarifying questions from Michelle?
Maybe at some point, I don't know, the incident deployment, I'm having trouble following that, and I'm wondering, is that, is that what kind of funds the, is this fire truck fund, is that the restricted for fire equipment? Is that kind of, are they all related?
They are. I pulled all the incident response line items into its own department, Department 235, because it is, it is fire, but it is, it is different from fire because it is actually a moneymaking where they respond- it is different from fire, because it is actually a moneymaking where they respond to. We've had firefighters on the Cameron Peak Fire, we've had them down on the Grizzly Gulch there outside of Glenwood Springs, we had, had them over there at the, at the one outside of Grand Junction, and they're currently deployed right now. But what these are, are firefighters and administrator type positions that are, are kind of adjunct employees of, of the Town of Unavista, and they respond to these fires specifically. We end up paying the expenses and then we get reimbursed. So the expenses at any given time during fire season is going to be more than the reimbursement. It, it took me a while to get my head wrapped around, but it is definitely a fire related, because we have our own firefighters respond to these incidents. But we also have firefighters from Durango and other municipalities that all work in this kind of little team that are deployed when we tell them that they're deployed.
And then the town pays and then feds, the federal government reimburses, is that where the money comes from?
It depends, it's usually the Forest Service, and sometimes it's routed through the state. But it's, it's a mixture of federal and state funds, depending on where the fire is, because we've responded to California and Montana and other places in previous years. So it just depends.
And then that, is that money, like the, the proceeds after we pay expenses then go, does that become restricted for fire equipment?
Yes.
Any other clarifying questions for Michelle? Okay, this, it's just a public hearing, I open this part of the hearing to public comment. If there was anybody who would like to make public comments, you may press star nine or star six to unmute yourself, or raise your hand.
We need to, oh yeah, you're right, I'm sorry.
Okay, I see no one at this point raising their hand, and nobody in the chat wanting to come forward, so I close this portion of the public comment. Before I close the next section, are there any other clarifying questions for Michelle from the trustees? Okay, trustees. We have before us the resolution, are there any discussion you have about the resolutions before you, or the information that was presented that you want to discuss between yourselves? Or I would entertain a motion to approve adoptions?
I don't think I'll understand this tonight with the incident report, but just looking up the truing up incident expenses, I don't quite understand that, but I'm certainly going to go ahead and pass Resolution Number 61, I'm just, I don't quite understand that.
Okay, come, any other comments trustees, and I would entertain a motion to approve or deny the Resolution Number 61, a resolution of the Board of Trustees adopting an adjustment and supplemental budget for the Town of Unavista.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Libby.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Devin, further discussion. Paula, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Bulpen?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, next, before you have a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Unavista to adopt supplemental appropriations for the Town of Unavista for the calendar year on the first day of January 2020, ending on the last day of December 2020. Any discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 62.
Thank you very much, Libby.
Okay.
Second, Nyberg, further discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Eckstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Bulpen?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, Michelle, you can move forward with that one. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the 2021 budget. I have been seeing some of the communications, and I appreciate that very much, trustees, by you communicating with Michelle on questions about the budget. It appears, Michelle, don't you agree that this platform is working very well?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle, if you want to proceed.
So Philip, did you want to take the clarification, you made these beautiful charts?
Besides your name on it, Michelle, I'll jump in if needed.
Um, actually, I'm going to use those for the budget book, if you don't mind. So we had some questions come up on the, on the ClearGov regarding questions about the general fund by expense type. And then I believe general fund 2021, okay, I see what you did, and then
I can talk to it, Michelle, I'm sorry, if you want me to, I can.
I would like that a lot.
Yeah, 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 go ahead, you've talked enough, all right, sorry, shifting gears. So yeah, a series of graphs to, to address some of the specific questions that came up. The first one is a look at 2021 as the first chart versus 2020 in terms of expense type. Again, this is only looking at the general fund, but it looks at, it kind of blocks or combines numbers by salaries and benefits, transfers, which again is transfers out of the general fund to airport Capital Improvement Fund, equipment, and then other expenses. So other expenses are, you know, all the other stuff that doesn't fit into one of those categories. Supplies, all those types of things. So a comparison of 2021 to 2020. Now, you'll see on several of these graphs that we have excluded incident response department out of that, because again, we in 2020, before the adjustment you just made, you just approved, our original budget was very small for incident deployment in terms of revenue and in terms of expenses. In 2021, we're putting, we're putting in a better estimate, which is a much higher amount. So that skews 2021 versus 2020, so we've pulled that out of both graphs and the, and more. And that's, that's what that little asterisk means when you see that on the chart. Plus, that's not town sales tax dollars going towards that effort. So we really don't feel like that's an accurate thing to include here. So you'll see that percentages are very close. The main difference is the percentage towards salaries and benefits as a, as a percent of the whole is a little less in 2021, mainly because we're transferring more to the Capital Improvement Fund specifically. So that's that first set of charts. Next one is general fund by department category. So that's a higher level category grouping the many departments across the general fund. So you'll see community services, that's things like rec, no, sorry, that's things like planning, culture and recreation, parks, recreation, general administration, which includes a lot of things. It's my favorite department, it's finance and you guys and me and, and lots of other things. I think I got another chart that shows that. Public safety, which is PD, fire, the public safety complex. And again, in this graph, it, it excludes the incident response program, which is a separate category, department, but not included in these numbers. And then public works. Going down here is digging into that, but then doing a comparison from 2020 to 2021, showing just a split of the whole of where these go. So in 2021, you can see it's pretty, pretty, pretty close to the same year on year in terms of a split of percentages. Going down to, I wanted to explain general administration here, because in the graph above, it looked like general administration was going up. What are we doing there? Well, actually, not a whole lot. The transfers out of the general fund are categorized under general administration and then down under public support. So you'll see there that the big jump from year to year is primarily due to the increased amount of money that we're transferring to the Capital Improvement Fund. The rest of the departments are pretty flat, mainly dealing with cost increase for running a business, running a town, and hiring people and things like that. Finally, looking at public safety, if you add the incident response back into that, you'll see here again, pre-2020 budget adjustment you just did, we had originally budgeted 40,500 versus in 2021, we've put in 288. Now, one thing that's changed from last meeting in terms of this incident response in 2021, it was down to about, I think it was 235,000. But what Michelle and I decided to do is increase the expense side of that to match revenues on incident response, because what we do is we save the net proceed. So that transfer that we would make, we, we're counting as an expense. So now in ClearGov, you'll see the expenses and the revenues for the incident response are equal. That's because we're already accounting for transferring the net proceeds into that truck, fire truck savings account. Otherwise, you can see the other public safety departments year on year increases there. Going down here, just kind of pointing out some of the other adjustments that have been made since the last meeting. And speaking and preparing with Joseph Typle, we agreed, looking at our projected revenues, we, we increased the community grant amount just, just a hair to 40,800. Sales tax revenue projections have been updated to reflect, now that we have August actuals. It didn't change at all that much. I think the net increase between town and county was like $4,000, something like that in the full year 2021 projection. And then finally, we, in talking with the police department, we needed to create a little bit of breathing room in our, in our general fund and capital improvement fund. So staff has proposed that we pull off and push out the Lexipol project until 2022 to, to keep our, our budget balanced, structurally balanced. So that, we believe, is, is an okay move, mainly because our legal team just finished a full review of our SOPs at the end of this, in the middle of the summer. So we shouldn't anticipate anything significant happening to our SOPs in 2021. And then we can start, we can integrate with the statewide Lexipol system in 2022. Again, the board can consider that, adding that back in at some point as well. So I think, Michelle, unless you have anything else, I think that summarizes what's happened since the last public hearing.
Yeah, that, that pretty much sums up all the changes and a little bit of clarification. Down here, it says attachments are explanatory graphs and charts, that was what was actually in the memo. I also added, exported this out of ClearGov and cleaned it up. And so this is what you're used to looking at based on where we were last Friday.
And we want to, we wanted to use this, not really for you all, it's okay for you to use this, but we want to make sure the public can see the details well. So that's the reason it's in the packet.
And so we're happy to take more questions, but I have been, Philip and I have been alternately answering questions arising in ClearGov, and so.
Yeah, thanks for answering all my questions. For, Philip, you mentioned the reason incident response is excluded, because it's not town sales tax paying for incident response?
So what I was trying to say was, if, again, if you look at this right here, if, if we were comparing 2021 to 2020, and we were rolling this in to, say, the public safety department, category department, it would make that overall public safety look like we were going way up. It would skew the numbers when you look at the graphs up here, right? If I can get there. And like, for here, example, if, if that difference was added into these numbers, it would make that jump, and you'd be like, I wonder why police is going up so much. You'd be left to kind of guess what's going on. So again, I excluded them from these numbers, and my point about not being a sales tax operated program is that I think you can exclude that program and, and look at these numbers. This is really what our sales tax is going towards. So what I, my point was, I think this is an accurate representation without including the incident response program.
Do you foresee moving forward then, and all incident response will always be excluded, or?
We can talk, we can talk about that, we, we need to include it because we are fronting it. Michelle and I have talked about actually separating it out from the general fund into a new fund, and I think that will just further keep the numbers clean, because I think it can mislead somebody that's looking at just general fund totals and not understanding that little component of it.
Because it seems like it would almost qualify as a fund then, right? If it's making its own money, so to speak, I mean, is that?
Yes, yes, and Michelle, I think, has, had a good proposal to me, and I think now the board can hear it, that starting probably when we have a clean, maybe in 2021, we could just move it off into its own fund.
And then it would just kind of follow that restricted for the fire equipment? Because I'm trying to figure out, you know, we're looking at paying for this fire station, and I'm looking at the restricted fire equipment balance, but it's hard for me to see, because I looked like, I was like, oh, we'll have, you know, based on the 2020 budget that I have here, I was like, oh, there'll be 309,000 in it, perfect, that will cover. But I don't think that's in it, because now I'm seeing there's like 50 some odd thousand. And I'm having a tough time following the numbers, because I think from what I see is expenses were 103,000 for incident response, and the revenue is 150. So is it, like, it's almost hard to see that bottom line, right? Because it's, it seems like it's 47,000 for 2020, or?
Yeah, we, we estimated that we would have net proceeds of about 47, $50,000 that would go into that savings account.
And the saving is the restricted for fire equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's pulling it back out so that it's truing up the bottom line for the general fund. So it So, having it in the general fund is problematic because we always have to remember to do these caveats or, yeah, represent it in different ways. So, I think a separate fund altogether is the way to go.
And will there be any projection, but it won't be $309,000 at the end of the year?
No.
Because of the fire truck?
Yeah, since we spent $250,000 out of it, I think, Michelle, we're probably projecting getting it back up to $50,000 by the end of the year. Is that maybe give or take some?
Well, and it's, it's just hard to estimate. They are having such a, extensive fire season that it'll probably end up being a pretty decent amount to go into, into that fund, but it's hard to project.
Can that fund be used for, like, a fire station update? Is there any earmarks or anything that we, because we've got to pay for that fire station somehow, and I don't see that in the budget yet, right?
Correct.
So, where's the $210,000 coming from for the fire command vehicle and there's like $210,000 in fire equipment? Is that coming from the general fund?
That's coming from that savings account. So, depending on where that savings account, like Michelle said, this fire season is insane. So, we don't know where the, where it will be at the end of the year. So, depending on what that saving, what that balance is in that savings account will allow us to spin towards the trucks that are projected in there or if the board wants to save it towards the enhancements on the fire station that we've talked about.
Board, if I could, if I may address the board, the fire station's in dire need of repair. It's probably, it's aired that, of all the things we saw on the core safety, I think it's going to be about $275,000. I'd be more inclined, Mayor, I don't know how we move forward with this, to take that money and put the, any extra money. I don't see how we can do both. So, I'm thinking that's the priority for the fire station, Mayor. How do you think we move forward with that, or how do we get expenses?
Obviously, that's how you present it, is by presenting a thought to the other trustees, planting the seed so that as we proceed with the budget hearings, we make those decisions that, as we move along. Do we want to put that money here or there, you know, point A, point B? That's just how it's presented. And that's exactly the way you do it, is by making those comments. Yep.
Great.
Are there any other clarifying questions for Michelle at this point? As this is a public hearing, I will open this portion of the meeting open for public comment. If there was anyone who would like to make public comment, there is a star nine to raise your hand, star six to mute or unmute, and also the chat button if you are on a PC. I see no activity, so I close public comment. And trustees' comments, as basically Amy just stated, entertaining the thoughts about how to go with some of these revenues that are going to be generated by this fire season. Keep those in mind. That's a proposal, Phillip, that we can see that possibly, and obviously, I like to hear from the chief, which direction we can go. I can't remember the exact numbers on the presentation as to how much it was going to cost to do the updates in the fire station.
$275,000.
Yeah, it was $275,000, assuming some overhead costs in that project. So, yeah, I think that was the number coming out of that presentation. So, I guess, from what I've seen on the incident response, I was probably a little short saying that we'd end up at 50. But I think what we can do is, the board can, I guess, here's something the board can look at. Would you, if we, if we stick with the $275,000 needed to address the deficiencies at the current fire station in 2021, would you prefer to utilize whatever we have in the fire truck savings account first? And then, whatever may be left, near, whatever's needed that's left, come from general fund, fund balance? Or would you like to do something else and utilize that truck savings for some of the requested trucks or truck vehicles for next year that the chief loaded into the budget? Which I think, Amy, that's what you were referring to.
Yeah, it's $210,000.
Yeah. So, that, I think that's maybe where the board can focus on. And then, Michelle, at one of these last meetings of the year, could bring an updated projection of where we'll end up on that truck fund savings account. And then, we'll have a better idea of what may, may need to come out of general fund, fund balance.
And that sounds appropriate. Trustees, does that make sense to you? Okay. And that will also give Chief Billers the opportunity to put in a little bit of comment to, let's say, assist us in that decision? Okay.
Sorry, I'm trying to come off mute. Yes, Mayor, sorry. That's, that's a great point. Yes.
Yeah, I would like to hear what Chief has to say. Obviously, we make the final decision and we, we have to account for that upgrade on the fire station. But I would like to hear his input at the same time. Next, I would like to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing. Is that correct, Jeff? Date specific?
That's right.
To the November 9th meeting. Thank you, Norm. Second Fay, further discussion?
Sorry, just clarification. November 10th.
Is it the 10th?
Yes.
Oh, I was looking at the Monday. Never mind. We're good. So, it'll be September, or excuse me, November 10th?
Yeah, November 10th.
Yes, thank you. Well, we'll go to September. Let's just skip the whole year, man. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee X. Stein?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Switzer?
Yes.
And Trustee Volpe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Michelle, Phillip. Right into trustee-staff interaction and I'll start off. I am very pleased to see the conversations going on in ClearGov. It, you, you'll be amazed, and actually, I know you, you see this, and if nobody else has looked at those conversations, the amount of time it's saving us in these meetings. It's just, like I say, some real good conversations going on and some good questions being asked. That's all I've got. Phillip, do you have anything?
Yes. What would the board like to do with the Chafee Housing, sorry, Housing Authority, Chafee Housing Authority board seats? Yes. Going back to the question of, do we want to go ahead and designate one of the spots? With the trustee and trustee X. Stein mentioned that she was willing to do that. And then, do you want applications for both spots or just applications from the public for the volunteer spot? Or whatever we want to call that, the community spot?
Thank you. Trustees, comments?
I have a comment.
Quickly, thank you.
Okay. I think that Amy has been very involved in the affordable housing. He would be a great asset, and I think we should have a board member on the board and just take applications to fill one from the general public.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thanks, Cindy.
Trustees, any more comments, please?
I concur with Cindy.
Okay. Devin, Libby? Dave?
Nothing to add. I concur as well.
Okay.
Works for me.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Okay, and so then, we will have, I guess, we would open up for applications, Phillip, then, for the remaining seat. I know you had put in a previous, previous notes on your administrative report that you had two already interested. Am I correct?
Yes, I'm trying to compete with the county for Joseph Typle.
Got you.
He's a PV guy. He's not a county guy.
Right.
Yes, and we did, we did have one other person that reached out. So, but I think Becky Gray is going to help us with countywide communication out about the specific skill sets that are needed to try to draw in some more interest. So, I would, I would hope that we would get a few more for you to consider.
And we could put that, basically, that'd be on the website, maybe in the newspaper or something, however we would do that. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
That sounds, yeah, it sounds like a good head nod from the board to Amy. You're in. And thank you both, Amy and Libby, for your involvement in this. It's been good.
You're welcome. It's been a privilege to work on it.
Thank you for your confidence, trustees. I'll try my best.
Thank you, Amy. Libby, Phillip, do you have anything else?
Nope. Thank you very much.
Okay, Paula?
Seven more days till Election Day will be over. This time in one week, election voting will be over. Town is very much involved in the process. As you know, Town Hall is a ballot drop-off site. On November 2nd, from 10:00 to 4:30, you can vote early down at the community center on Election Day from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So, we're very much involved in that. I'll be down on Sunday afternoon, working with Lori Mitchell, getting the site set up. Plus, I'll be available to help her if she needs my assistance and things. Plus, we'll be here on site. So, there'll be a couple of us here till 7:00 o'clock that night. Plus, we will be eagerly waiting the results of ballot question 2A and 2B. So, other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Paula. Libby, do you have anything?
Pretty soon, it will be time for the trustees to present their comments on the town staff, such as the administrator, the treasurer, the town clerk, and the town attorney. So, I'll be sending out a request for your reviews and comments.
Thank you for the reminder, Libby. Norm?
I'm good.
Good. David?
Nothing.
Jeff?
I'm good. Thank you.
You're happy. Devin?
I'm good.
Amy?
Yep, I just want to thank trustees for engaging in a discussion about what's going on with our business community. And Dave Volpe, I know we've talked in the past, or you brought up at one of our work sessions of, about having meaningful communication, dialogue, and I think that I may not have said, hey, we should do this, but I, or maybe someone may not say, this is, this is what needs to be done, but I really appreciate having space for discussion because we can't figure out solutions to problems if we can't talk about it. So, I really appreciate the discussion. Michelle, sorry if you and I butted heads. You're rad, and thank you for all your work on the budget. And for trustees, we do need to start to think about the police station. I'd like to maybe think some sort of plan that maybe some money was squirreled away, maybe even if it was just the excess sales tax. So, then, when it comes time to build this $4 million police station, there's maybe some money set aside. I think that would be fiscally responsible. So, that would be awesome if we could find a way to do that. And thanks for all the budget questions answered.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, do you have anything else?
Nothing for me.
Thank you, Michael. You still here?
Yeah, nothing for me. Yeah, I'm good.
All right, Mark?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Joel, you're on spot?
No exact sessions, so...
I know. I saw that. You know, I printed off two pages. That's all on the third page. I missed it. Sean, do you have anything for us?
No, I'm good. Thank you all.
All righty. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is executive session. In the executive session, do you consider the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other properties pursuant to CRS section 24-6-402, paragraph four, sub-paragraph A concerning the potential parkland property? I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Don't move.
Thank you.
Second.
Second row. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We will go into executive session.